I'm going to enjoy it.
Congratulations to the five United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now that we can all get comfortable again.
Good evening. We're going to shuffle the deck here a little bit and go right to new business, 8A. Get digging my file and get that out of there.
We'll be right on the bottom.
Yes, sir. And that, you're being efficient using both sides of the paper, that's great.
It's Joan, yep.
Whoever's doing that, good job. CJ Hollers have submitted an application and entertained a motion.
I've got motion to continue.
Okay, we have a motion by Chris, seconded by Randy, open it for discussion. Sounds like it's going to be a fast night tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome back. All set? Yes, we will see you during the year.
Now you should take her for snacks.
The Lord willing, the creek don't rise. I don't think we have to worry about our bridge going out quite yet. We probably shouldn't be cracking bridge joke at this point, right?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm sure that'll upset somebody.
Hey. All right. We've done a page, hearing of visitors, we have none unless Andy would like to make some comments?
Not yet.
Yeah. That's good. We have no public to make comment tonight. The only things left is finish the warrants, which once Joe signs it, we'll just take it back and we'll put it over in David's spots. David is coming. I understand he's going to be about 45 minutes late, so we may have to stretch things out or take a rest, recess or two to make it. I'd ask for a motion on the Virgin City Council meeting for October 27th, 2009.
Can I make the motion?
Ziggy made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And Randy seconded. Any omissions, errors, corrections?
The correction is on the sewer extension policy. It isn't Crescent Drive, it's Ridgefield Drive. It's the last page, second paragraph.
I missed that one. Good catch. Okay? Any other omissions, corrections, or errors? Hearing none, all those in favor of passing those minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, Mel, we're going to talk about budget review report.
Sure. I actually did another line by line and I feel exactly the same at this point going into winter. I wanted to just remark on a couple of things. You'll notice on the first page, in the middle, the category that says outside sources and you'll see a line item there that says education tax retained with a budget of zero. And you'll see a revenue there of $5,026.91. That amount of money actually has been coming in for a number of years and it's just been lumped into the property tax line item. It's actually, it isn't like they send us a check, Joan, really, do they? It's really an adjustment.
Education tax that we pay to the school district.
Right. So in essence, it's kind of a form of an administrative fee, in essence, because they determine what our educational tax rates are, both the homestead rate and the non-residential rate. And then there is some calculation that's made, which is, I'm sure that it's based on some percentage, all right? So the point is that $5,000 in years past was dumped into the top line item and...
Has always exceeded the budgeted amount by approximately that amount of money. And it was never identified or probably explained that that's the city's fee for collecting the education tax. That's what we're allowed to keep.
So in essence, what we, you know, to me, $5,000 is material and we should know about that going in. And so in another year, provided we can plan for that same thing, we would have that line item there so that in essence, we aren't, so that we're setting the tax rate properly, really. Because what's happening is we weren't taking into account that $5,000. You know, it represents a fourth of a cent on the tax rate, all right? So I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but you know, when we learn about something to the tune of $5,000, we think that it deserves a line item and an explanation of what it's for. So that's a new line in there. The other thing that, and we haven't totally straightened this out, I've mentioned before that the, we are the recipients of various, I'll call them small, police grants, DUI enforcement, click it or ticket, you know, various highway safety programs. And the way that we keep track of those, or we're trying to keep better track of those, it's been a little bit of a headache. Actually, Joan will say it's actually been a lot of a headache over the years, particularly, it was a headache before when Joan only dealt with the revenue side of the grants, but now she has to deal with both the revenue and the payroll side of it. So it's a tripling, it has a tripling effect. So what we're trying to do is make the system be a little bit simpler. And we're not quite done that, but you'll notice on page one where it has this police 210 highway safety, that $2,500. There's actually two other grants. There's another $800 grant and another $1,700 grant. And so it certainly is not our practice to amend your adopted budget, but on our end, it's really the only way that we can keep, it's a better way for us to keep track of it, is that when a grant comes in that is absolutely 100% refundable, it's easiest for us to create a line item equalling that a grant. And if you were to flip over to grants, you'll see, even though it's a negative, over on page four, on the bottom of page four, it does say minus $2,500. We'll get that changed so that it is a positive number. So in essence, that's the expense side of that grant. So I'm going to say the next time that you see this budget, you'll see three line items that are relating to police revenues, and then you'll see three line items related to police expenses. And what happens is when the officers work grant detail, their wages are actually charged to that line item. And so it in essence, you know, populates the expense. And then what happens is once the check actually comes here, there's a reimbursement request, check comes here, what we have to do is do a journal entry to cover social security and employer side of the social security, the employer's retirement expense and the employer's workers' compensation. So the grants cover all related costs as it relates to a grant. And so if there's a $2,500 grant, it might mean $2,000 in payroll expense, and there's $500 of overhead, if you will, covering those other things, so that those numbers end up equaling out. So if you're just...
Net gain, net loss?
Should be zero. Better be zero.
How about your time? Are we getting, recouping your time?
We can. There is a provision for, I believe it's up to a 10% administrative fee, if you will, that could, that we can do that. I don't know that we have, that we've ever put that in, in essence, with the application, but it can be, we can do that.
We never did in the past, but Brent is aware of it, so he may be including it. We haven't got through a full grant yet to know.
How to work it?
But it is eligible. You can charge it.
And it's all new to Brent, so you know...
If you're taking time out of your already busy day and doing something of that, I mean, I would hope we'd be able to recoup some of that from back.
Yeah, well...
So, yeah, we can, you know, Joan and I have talked about that. What we, one of the things we don't want to do is have that gobbled up in another administrative chore to keep track of the 10%, but if it's easy, if it's something, we can book it, easy, journal entry, the expense, which I, I mean, you know, the, there isn't any additional labor from a, it's not like we're paying somebody overtime.
Yeah.
So how we journal entry, it might be a little bit tricky, but we can figure out a way to do that.
Now, my next question is when they go do these details, are they taking our vehicles?
We are, yes, they are, and mileage is a part of the expenses, so that's...
We're compensated.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, while we're on the question of being compensated, I was trying to...
Yeah.
And the question, I mean, when you were talking about the budget, the first step, and you said, you said this has been a nightmare because you never did that side, what is the reason?
Oh, it's just grants, they're, they just...
Okay. So how come she hadn't done this before? Is it because...
Because she didn't do payroll before.
Oh, so this was at one time city manager's secretary?
Correct.
Jenny used to do it.
The other, the other part of the, the other part of the dilemma, Zig, is that many of these grants historically were tied in the federal government's year, which runs from October 1st to September 30th. Run a fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th. So what happens is, is the expenses sometimes cross the fiscal year and you can actually submit for a request for reimbursement in multiple stages. You know, you can spend $600, request reimbursement, get it back. So that is as much of the problem that we have. Joan can get the payroll side of the thing straight, really. That's, she, you know, as long as information gets to her correctly, the payroll side is fine. The accounting can be a little difficult, as I mentioned, because of the crossing of fiscal years, and they've actually fixed that. I think many towns complained about the fact that this really is a difficult thing. And so we actually now, you can run the grants such that they run from September to March, so that that, even though it falls within the federal government's fiscal year, you have to close it out by March. And so it starts in September, which is a part of our fiscal year, and ends in March, which is a part of our fiscal year. And hopefully, if you can get a check reimbursed with it two or three months before June 30th, it's clean, all right? So we're trying to get it to be as simple as possible, but it can be a little bit of a chore.
It's maybe a little hectic, but it's very helpful as far as highway safety goes. They were in Route 15 in Colchester yesterday pulling them over left and right, it's from a bunch of different departments there.
One of the things that these grants, you know, it is not intended to supplant existing shifts. I mean, these, you know, these grants are supposed to be for additional duties, but one of the things that it does allow us to do is you can have two officers working DUI grant detail, all right? And you could have another officer on, let's say, a Friday or Saturday night, that's working the shift, all right? Obviously, if something happens, you know, the officer that's doing grant detail can come off grant detail just as easy as it went on grant detail. So it actually does provide us with additional manpower that we wouldn't normally have to schedule, because as Joan's saying, it does provide some backup. So there are some other, you know, there's some other benefits to the grants. I do think that in the coming years, the amount of money that we receive actually is somewhat based on prior activity, all right? And some of our numbers seem to be a little low relative to the number of DUIs that we had in this community. And so, you know, if, if you have a DUI grant and it results in a lot, you know, a lot more people being picked up and processed, that shows proof that we indeed have a problem here in this area, and more dollars can be put forth in that. So it's possible that the grants can continue to, can continue to grow.
You have eight in the last month, just so you know.
Please? In this area?
Yes. Your department has issued eight citations in the last month.
Well, they're doing a job.
And we have the police fines on the front page. Tell, they're already over budget, you know?
Which is a good thing.
Yeah. It's a revenue. So, you know, it just shows, they're out there on the street, more tickets are being issued, more revenue's coming to the town, which means people are violating. They're either speeding or running stop signs.
So we get some of that revenue?
Very much so. Yeah. Ticket revenue?
Well, how much is a ticket revenue? I mean, what are we talking about?
Well, it depends what the offense is, what they get.
So we get a percentage of that?
Yeah, yeah. Any, like, we have a, you know, we obviously have a village. The way that, the way that tickets work is it deals with when a police officer writes a ticket for violation of city ordinance. Speeding is a city ordinance. Defective equipment is not a city ordinance. So when they write a ticket for speeding, the percentage of that ticket is different on a speeding ticket than what it would be on a ticket for defective equipment. So there's an administrative fee that comes off from there. Sheet comes in from Joan. We get a check once a month based on collections. It's not based on the ticket, but they actually have to pay, that is what is paid. We even get sheets where people make payment plans over a year, and there's $10 that comes in or whatever. So, yeah, it's a percentage, it's a percentage of that ticket.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mel, or not?
Overall, Mike, I'm telling you, I really feel good at this point in time going, and I love, and when we get to November, I really love it when it doesn't snow, so...
We'll be snowing into April, probably.
Well, the sun has been shining a lot longer than it's supposed to in November, so we can just hopefully, we'll hang around a lot longer.
Well, they say the farmer's almanac is weight Thanksgiving Day, so that's what they've been talking about.
Still deer hunting at that time, so we're all set.
Okay. Any questions, Mel? Hearing none. We're going to jump to committee report. We'll skip over Chris because she's farther down the agenda. David's not here yet.
He's further down as well.
Randy, you got anything happening in your world?
No.
Ziggy?
No.
Anything, any rumors from the surrounding towns? Is anything going on? Quiet?
Everything seems to be quiet.
Any budget things going on? Are they having problems with...
I haven't heard any right now.
Okay.
And I guess, I don't know, you know, Pantin gets a lot of new people, you know, that's kind of, they're trying to catch up on what's going on.
It'll take them a little while to grow.
Yeah.
I will say, Zig, and it may just be a timing issue, at the last meeting, the board signed the recycling agreements, and all of those went out in the mail with an explanatory letter, and they've all come back but Pantin. And I do know, it's the representative of Pantin that sits on the solid waste district board, they're gathering information. I was able to get some information, and I think it's absolutely fine for towns to find out how many, you know, what is the participation, what is the participation level from their town to make sure that, you know, there is, you know, broad use, if you will. But I haven't seen the, I haven't seen the contract come in, and I forgot to mention it to your sister Lynn when she stopped in the office today. That wasn't what we were talking about, so I didn't. So I just want to let you know, you know, at some point, I may, at some point, you may want to make a call or something, wait another week or so, because again, it could be a timing issue for when their select board, for when their select board meets.
Because I know that, when I talked to, I can't even think of her name, she says right now, we're just getting a feel of each other, and there's so many things, because she's new, you know, and she's probably been there longer than any of them right now.
My committee went down the lake.
Okay. All righty, then Joe would be next, and he's got to take an urgent call. So we'll jump along to old business. Nothing, actually, I do have one thing that I can, this isn't really a committee report, but I can do a few things that I got to do here throughout the meeting. I just want to share with everybody, and I'll pass it around rather than trying to read it, but got a very nice note from the Maritime Museum thanking us for our cooperation and help that we've given our merchants, the city, the city manager throughout the year, and being able to bring the Loews McLauray up and share our city and the information to get, information about the Loews McLauray. So a very nice photo. We'll start it around the table, and please look at it and pass it back when you get done. And Joe, are you all set to take back over?
Yeah, I'm being...
Yeah, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Did you want me to go ahead now?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Now's a good time.
I've got an updated spreadsheet here that includes some revenue information from Waterbury that I missed in the email the first time around, so just pass it on. That's the only thing that's different. I just made up this spreadsheet just to show some comparisons from town to town and just a couple of interesting things. I have a lot, a lot more information if people are interested. I have information from other years, I have some information on salaries and so forth for labor at the other pools and for the Virgin's pool. So this is just kind of a skeleton, just for people's interest. But it certainly shows that budgets in many towns for the pools are pretty heavily subsidized by towns, at least that's kind of what I've read between the lines here. I didn't get any revenue information from Winuski, but I don't really have...
I think I sent that, that was the one I sent you, Joe.
Oh, I thought that was Waterbury that you sent.
No, I sent you, the one that had the joke in it.
Right.
The 2305 was not a joke.
Oh, that was it?
I mean, that's true. That is true.
$2,000 revenue.
That's correct. I wasn't, I wasn't kidding.
All right. So, but I, there must be, well, 2305.
Twenty-three, twenty-three hundred and five dollars. That's 2,305.
That's right. I forgot, you did send me that.
Is the, that's the 2008 revenue stream for the Winuski pool.
Don't know anything about the Winuski pool. Maybe it's 50 years old, I don't know. But at any rate, it tells me a couple of things. First of all, it looks like our labor costs are pretty much in line with at least many of these pools, or the labor cost for this pool. And it also tells me that we certainly have a much more active membership, you know? You can see a percentage of the, our budget is much higher in Virgin's than it is in some of the others. So there's some real advantages there. I talked to Rowland this morning, I happened to see him, and he's, he's working on his protocol manual, I guess, sort of waiting for the city to contact him as far as if they, if the works people would like to discuss things with him. He said, well, just have him call me.
Okay. I saw Rowland in the bank.
Yeah.
And he reassured me that he's working on that, Joe. I think Joe brought this up before, that, you know, Rowland, you know, has put together notes over the years as to things to do, and he's, he is, you know, taking that out and trying to fine tune it, because there's a lot of things that he does automatically, as we all do, and he's just trying to walk through the various steps that he takes every year down there in the pool, so that some form of a manual is being created.
Right. Yeah, he told me, he's just sort of trying to decide how to organize it and how to put... So I guess I'd like a little bit of guidance from the council at this point. Would be a good idea at this point to sort of put together some kind of a partial budget or a proposal of some kind? I was curious about the waterworks fund or the rec fund or whatever it's called, would that be a good use for that particular fund as far as maybe, maybe kind of earmarking some of the funds in that for pool use? Other question I had, as far as a recreation director that the town had a few years ago, I know it was part of the budget, don't know how much we paid that individual, what that individual's responsibilities were, is this something we could roll in or, you know, maybe combine and maybe...
Was that grant money?
That was grant money?
Grant money?
They covered that?
For a while, yeah.
For a while, but one of the discussions that Mel and I have had on the side, and I asked if it might be the right time to figure out what an appropriate salary would be for such a person?
Right.
Because there would be a wider sense of not just the pool, but everything that they have to cover?
Right.
And figure out what that would cost on our tax rate to do that, and possibly put that out to the voters and see if they would support that. We didn't get any other discussion other than that level there, so, but we, because we didn't know where you were coming from and what, you were going to supply for information.
Yeah.
The $6,000 to the top, Joe?
That it comes in from the town contributions, that's actually from the watershed fund?
Yeah. Well, I figured that, yeah. I mean, I didn't know that, but I sort of assumed that, yeah. But I didn't know, I don't know anything about that fund as far as what's available or, and, you know, I mean, the director is already making money, you know, in this budget as, you know, from the membership fees and so forth, but probably not at the same level at some other towns, although the labor, labor costs are pretty equivalent to some of the other towns that submitted some information to me. So I guess that's what I, the question is, how should I move forward? I mean, I, as far as I, if there's more information I can collect, I'd be happy to do so. I'm not sure kind of what use that would be, but if people have more questions, I could supply more of the information that I have. Or would you like me to just go ahead, maybe sit down, Mel, for an hour or so and kind of bang out a partial budget or something like that?
You know, everyone is thinking is that we, maybe part of all this thing is, we need to know like the age of the equipment?
Right.
And the pumps and the life...
We got some of that information from Linda Hawley, and I think she's got a lot of that information available, so...
So I think you should, I mean, we should gather that information to see if we're going to have to replace pumps in five years, so we can, can forecast a budget. Or if there's been any problems with any...
Well, we talked about that at our initial committee meeting, and I think that there was a complete overhaul, I don't have my notes with me, I'm sorry, but there was an overhaul of that equipment within the last 10 years. Is that, do you recall?
Yes.
So that, you know, so it's, you know, it's been fairly recently renovated, but that, you know, I know that doesn't fully answer your question, but I do have some of that information in my notes, and I can find out more.
I think, Joe, one of my questions would be, if it was overhauled 10 years ago, is that the first time it's been overhauled, or are we looking at the third time since the pool opened? You know, that type of information, so we can plan what the expenditures would be and how many years.
Now, am I reading this correctly, that the profit lost down there, everything that's in brackets, lost?
That's, in essence, that's the subsidy, if you will. In those municipalities, in essence, the shortfall, and in parentheses, is obviously coming from the general fund.
Ours does not have that.
Not, not this year, that's correct. But, you know, do keep in mind that, you know, if the city didn't, you know, if the city didn't put in the $6,000, let's say, and if the Fishman family didn't put in the $2,000, there's a couple other numbers, and I don't want to totally dissect this thing, but, you know, Joe and I have been sharing these numbers, and I get to, I get to looking at them. And I, my eye, my eye in looking at numbers that I receive from other towns is where are expenses, where are the expenses that should be there that aren't...
Pretty obvious that there's some...
And there are some of those.
Like the insurance?
Well, that's, and that, Zig, actually even is reflected in our own numbers. The insurance, workers' compensation is covered in this budget, all right? However, when it says insurance, that really, that 1947, that's workers' compensation, that's not property and general liability. Property and general liability has been absorbed into the school district budget, all right? So there's a, there is a cost, that's a real cost, that is not reflected here, that obviously, the way that we would do it, we would take that on. When you look, and when you look at some of these other towns, I can tell you that in, I think in the case of Middlebury, there is some additional, you know, public works labor involved and this type of thing, so there is some cost that is being absorbed. But that's, it's really not that far off. Another thing that I, that I noticed in Waterbury, and this is really worth noting, because in Waterbury, and I'm not sure how water and sewer works in Waterbury, but I can tell you, in their budget, where it says utilities, that's, you know, that's, I believe that water and sewer is in there, and it's to the tune of $7,000. And relative to Virgin's, the contract or the agreement that we have with the Virgin's Pant Water District is that the Virgin's Pant Water District is to provide water to the swimming pool free of charge, all right? So there's, there's a, you know, in essence, the water users, if you will, are subsidizing the pool. And I'm assuming when they empty the pool, that goes into a manhole and that heads down in the treatment plant?
Nope.
Doesn't it, goes into the...
Nope. Pump is in the ravine.
Okay.
So...
Hopefully that's okay. But anyway, there is no, there is no cost there.
I'm sure. I've done it for the last five or six years, but I think they just set up a four-inch and... a four inch and dump it down in the ravine.
All that chlorine water in that water?
There isn't any chlorine.
I would say.
Oh, it's gone.
I would say the chlorine's probably all evaporated.
It's more of an algae.
Okay.
That stuff doesn't, I mean, they have to put chemicals in a couple of times a week because they're so volatile.
Yeah, they burn it out, so.
Just thinking all that little wildlife, the little, holy woks out there.
They send a lot of frogs down that way, too.
Uh, related to this, um, at the last meeting, I spoke about the land situation. I did speak with Linda again. I, I, there was actually a graded school district, uh, meeting last night at five thirty or seven thirty, whatever, whatever it was, five thirty. I, I neglected to give Linda a call. Uh, I, I just tried to call her at home and she, she was at a school meeting, another school meeting, so I don't know what the results of, uh, that's where you were.
No, go through it.
So, I, I don't know, I talked, I talked to Linda, uh, on Monday and what the school, uh, graded school district was supposed to talk about was again, talk about, you know, the disposal of the land and, you know, how the property needs to be surveyed and, you know, what is their, what is their plan? And so, I just don't have a result of that, of that meeting. My sense is that certainly Linda, uh, you know, does feel that, uh, the proceeds from the land really should, you know, should follow the pool and provide, uh, as Randy calls it, the seed, the seed money for that. And I think, you know, to Chris's point, uh, you know, about what are those, you know, what are those expenses down the road, you know, trying to go into this thing with their eyes open, uh, and if we, uh, you know, if we know that there's a ten thousand dollar expense or a twenty thousand dollar expense that's, you know, ten years down the road, we, we need to know these things going in so that, uh, we know, uh, you know, what our exposure is. You know, one of the things that's clear to me and, and I'm sure Joe would agree, uh, when you compare the Vergence pool operation, it's a lot better than the other towns from a self-sustaining operation. It, they really do, uh, except for that, the six thousand dollars we give, you know, they come very close to being a break even, uh, and it's not, you know, not really subsidized, if you will, by the taxpayers as it is in, in, in other towns.
Is there a bond still being paid on the pool?
Uh, I, I think that that's paid off. I don't believe so.
One year?
I believe they have one more year.
Like this is, this is, is, this year is probably the last year of the payment?
I think that, that last payment would probably quit the property.
Would be paid before?
I think it's, I think it's done this, you, it's either done this year in the current fiscal year, uh, or there's, or there's one more payment.
Exactly.
I think this is last year, but I, I don't, I don't know that for certain. I, I think it's like seven thousand dollars in there, something like that.
Well, Mr. Joe was looking for some direction. Would anybody object for, as he recommended, set with Mel, work some numbers, do a budget, preliminary budget, get the information from, uh, and see if we could have it put together by the December meeting? If, if that timing would work?
And that Mel would include like this insurance is only working's comp? We would have figures of everything?
I should be able to get that, yeah.
Everything.
Yeah.
Now, wouldn't we just roll like, they would go into the city's policy and be part of?
Absolutely. It, it, the way that the, the city's policy, workers' compensation is never free, uh, because there's a payroll audit. However, if in the middle of the year, the city acquires, uh, if the city acquires a vehicle, acquires a building, all right, there, the way that our insurance is set up with them, there is no additional premium charge. So, you, in essence, you know, we would get a half year, uh, of property and general liability free. It's just the way that the league, league's program works, all right? Then obviously in two thousand and eleven, in two thousand and eleven is when we would actually start, you know, seeing, uh, a premium charge for that facility on the property and general liability.
So, we give it back to them for fifteen days at the end?
Yeah, there you go, Mike.
And then we take it back?
We got it, we got it.
And see if it?
I'll pick it out.
Can I ask a clarifying question? When you say a preliminary budget, is that for the pool or is that for also, say, the skating rink and tennis, tennis courts and the basketball courts as well?
It's just for the pool, is what we're looking at.
Just for the pool budget. But the land that you're discussing with the school board is also the, the land you're discussing with the ID board is also the other?
The land that, that's being discussed with the, with the ID board is really all of their land.
Especially focused on the pool.
Correct.
And I think we're already funding the, whatever we do there for ice skating and that, we already.
We're already funded, right.
We already, our maintenance is done by our, our.
Yeah, like the ice skating, warming hut, any labor associated, that, we've already, we're already, we've already been paying that anyway.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Any other questions? I think I've got enough nods of the heads that we'll go with that recommendation and have you two work, work things out and move things forward. Okay? We have our guest here. It didn't make the agenda, but we asked Cheryl if she would be able to come and join us tonight. She is our, uh, that is Cheryl Brinkman and she is our representative for Addison County Solid Waste and, uh, they have a, uh, annual meeting on Thursday night and we asked her to come share some information. Cheryl, the floor is yours.
Yeah, we have, um, you can hear me okay?
Pull up a chair and make yourself comfortable.
We have a, um, a budget that's out there that, um, Mel attended the last meeting of the, um, the Addison County Solid Waste Management Board meeting and there's a, a budget that's proposed, um, that if that goes forward, which I believe we have a final vote on Thursday of this week, and, um, what is on the table is a slight increase from last year's budget, um, and there's been an awful lot of, uh, discussion about that budget because this last year has been a very difficult one for the transfer station. As you can well imagine with the economy, there is a lot less building going on, there's a lot less construction, there's a lot less, uh, I guess you call it debris, C and D? Is that what?
Construction and demolition.
Construction and demolition debris. Still learning the terms. And as you can well imagine, there's also less trash being generated, which is a really good thing. That is what the transfer station and, and the whole program is trying to promote is, is more recycling and more reusing of, of materials. So, you have, it's a difficult situation to be in. You promote recycling and you promote, um, these other disposal programs and yet your income is based on the trash that's coming in, so it's a, it's a difficult position to be in. So, the transfer station and the, the whole district has lost money, as you can well imagine. So, they've taken a lot of, quite a few steps to try to mitigate that. They've laid off part-time people. They've, um, they, well, I don't know if they, just for the, the winter, but they've reduced their hours on Saturday for staffing purposes. They've put off getting a lot of new equipment, office supplies. There's a, there's a wish list that, you know, has not happened. Let's see. So, they've taken a lot of small steps. They've, they've suggested, um, having a transaction fee for everything that comes into the transfer station because with every transfer, with every transaction, there is a, a cost to the transfer station. So, even if it's something that is, um, not costing, uh, for disposal, there's still a transaction, um, cost. So, there's a lot of things that have been done over the last year to try to slow that, um, you know, that bleeding essentially. So, what they've proposed in this budget is to go up from one twenty-two per ton to one twenty-five per ton. There was lots of, um, different schedules that I, that I could show you, like here's what it would look like if there's no increase, the increase at one twenty-five and increase to one twenty-six. There were lots of different proposals. And the one that seems most palatable to, um, to most people on the board and that which doesn't, um, cost too much is to go up to one twenty-five per ton. Let's see, that would, if things stayed the same next year, that would end the year with a slight, um, a slight increase in money as opposed to the deficit that there is now. But there's a lot of discussion around that and that will be coming out to the towns. And, um, Mel has a lot of experience at, at where all this money comes from in the rate stabilization fund and, uh, there's been some talk of why not taking some of the rate stabilization fund to kind of bail out the transfer station temporarily. Um, and, and that, that certainly is what we can, we can talk about that tonight. The, um, the, we can go either way on that one. We don't want to, the, the transfer station, the Addison County Solid Waste Board does not want to, you know, increase prices to make it more difficult for people during these times, but at the same time, it, you know, you have to kind of stay solvent and, um, taking money, and, and Mel has an opinion on the rate stabilization fund. What I'm hearing from some of the, the other board members, just to, to let you know, is that some people feel that taking money from the rate stabilization fund is a temporary fix to something that perhaps if things don't change in the next two years and we don't see them changing, it's like a temporary fix to not really addressing the problem. But there may be some advantages to that, that Mel may have a different idea. Because the, that budget vote is coming up on Thursday, I thought I would come tonight and see if, um, if you had some thoughts on that. I do represent Vergence, so I thought I would hear from, from you guys and see if you had any other questions. You know, my, my role is supposed to be a conduit, you know, between, um, the city council and, and Vergence with the board. So, if you have some questions about the activities or the budget, you know, certainly Mel is an excellent resource, but if you have some questions that I don't know the answers to, I'd be very happy to, to talk to the board and, and get some answers for you.
Bristol still does not allow?
They do not.
Bristol and Salisbury don't.
I know that they, at one time, they were talking about a possibility of getting them in there because there, again, if you could get those two towns, work those two towns in some way, that would help with the offset some.
With the overall cost, yeah. I, I, I don't know the history with Bristol and why they're not, um, with that district. It seemed, I don't know.
It's because they have their own, they have their own landfill and felt that, uh, that the, uh, the cost of operating that landfill on a per ton basis, uh, they felt that they could do that, um, equal or less than what it costs to go through the transfer station at that time. Running small landfills, uh, can be extremely expensive. I, there was a time when I was close to those numbers, you know, the Salisbury landfill. I had a, there was a time when I had a handle on that, but, uh, I, I believe that, that they felt that they wanted to control their own destiny by continuing to run their own, their own facilities and so therefore, uh, decided not to join the district. I mean, there may come a day where, where their landfills close and they need to, uh, be tied in with somebody. Obviously, you know, the likely choice would be to tie in the Middlebury.
So, they have a, an annual report and proposed budget, which is what, what Mel has over there. I don't know if you've all seen it, but, um, they, my experience with them has been a very positive one and they do, uh, promote waste reduction and maximize the, the reduction of waste through a variety of means. Some of the good work that they do is, is the stuff that you probably don't see on a regular basis. They, uh, they, they work with the Vermont Recyclers Company that goes to, to elementary schools and high schools and teaches the kids through a whole bunch of different cool plays about recycling and composting. They have an incredible, uh, they've got a great relationship right now with electronic waste with, um, recycle?
Well.
What is it? It's not Recyclenorth? No, the one's in Middlebury.
Oh, um, it's over behind the animal shelter.
It's not Good Point. Anyway.
Yeah, I know who it is.
Excellent recycling program for electronic waste down there. And, um, the, the last meeting that I went to, it was at the Grange Hall in Ferrisburg and they put together a PowerPoint, a slideshow that showed all of the different programs that they promote. They, they sell composters, they do an excellent outreach to, to people. And, and it's interesting to, to know where that battery goes that you recycle. Very interesting. I thought that it would actually be a really, um, nice, uh, display, if nothing else, at the, at the town meeting to, to show people where their trash goes. Where does that stuff go that we recycle? I think it, it's, maybe it's just me, I think it's a really interesting, um, path to, to, you know, to kind of trace where does my trash go and where does that recycling go? They, they mulch stuff, they take good, um, good mulch and give it back to the, the residents. It's, it's a real nice program that they have going down there.
Christmas trees. They do the Christmas tree grinding.
Christmas trees, yep, yep.
So, you, you'd actually like to put a, some sort of display together for this coming town meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think they would, um, be very helpful in, in putting some type of public presentation together for the, for the town meeting day. I remember, um, Diane did something on efficiency last time and that was, it's, it's kind of nice to have that, that information to, to look at while you're mulling about and having all those desserts that you bring.
Yeah, I'm planning on doing it again this year.
Excellent.
Whether dessert social and, uh, we'll see what other surprises we can come up with.
People always have questions about, you know, where do I take my old, um, computer? You know, there, people, I don't think, even though we send information out, I don't think people really have those questions really answered when they have the question. You know, it's like, you know, when the information comes, they don't like put it in a place to refer to, but it is very interesting to know how much stuff they will, they will just take everything off your hands, you know, appliances and refrigerators. And it's all done in a very conscientious manner. You know, they, they'll, um, you know, call up the contractor that they know that that material will, will get to the right place. You know, it's not just being sent overseas. You know, we want to know where that's going. They, they have a, they did a contract with or promoted a program with Sony, so that they were actually taking their Sony televisions back. They were putting a sticker on whatever Sony television came to the transfer station so they would go back to Sony so that they could actually, it's like a, a product stewardship. You know, they were taking back their, um, televisions and they try to promote that at every opportunity. So, I don't know if you have some thoughts, especially you, Mel, on, on the direction that, uh, we should take with the, uh, with the proposed budget. I certainly will, um, pursue getting a, a, a public presentation if, if nothing, you know, it'd be great is if we could have that slideshow that just ran so you wouldn't have to have somebody here, but it could just be running in the background. I think that would be really interesting to people.
See what you can do, get with me and, uh, we'll run it by and figure out, you know, a good location, uh, you know?
Yeah. We don't want to be intrusive, but it would be interesting.
We're doing well with turnout, so it all depends on Mother Nature and what she decides to dump on us at that point in time, but, uh, but, yep. Yeah, we, we weren't happy to provide space to educate citizens.
Yeah, I, I, the educational piece is, is, um, one of the most important ones, I think, that they, they can, they can promote.
We can also work some of our other events, too, that are coming up next year.
Do you have some thoughts, Mel, on the budget?
Yeah, I, uh...
I definitely want to hear from you.
Cheryl, uh, has been a very, very good, uh, I'm her alternate on the board of supervisor and, and Cheryl fortunately, and my wife appreciates that, that Cheryl regularly attends these meetings and, and I think she went to every meeting but, except, except for one. And it probably was the biggie, to tell you the truth, not that the others aren't, aren't important, but...
Change that vote, yeah.
So, anyway, Cheryl, you know, told me that she wasn't going to be there and so I agreed to go to the meeting and it was really the meeting whereby the board discussed, uh, the proposed budget. Now, keep in mind, I hadn't been to a solid waste district board meeting for over ten years, but I certainly went to every meeting for the ten prior, so, uh, I'm, I'm very familiar with the terminology. I love to talk trash. So, uh, anyway, uh, one of the things I, I felt, I felt was good is, um, you know, a lot of people, you know, have invented a lot of things. My, my claim to fame is I invented the stabilization fund. A lot of people didn't, didn't realize that I was the one. It was funny, I was at the meeting and somebody started to describe what this thing was for and I said, "Well, Katie, actually I, I invented the stabilization fund, so I know what it's for." And what it was really for was because you can't... And what it was really for was because you can't, as Cheryl talks about it, it's very difficult to predict waste. I mean, it's, there's so many variables. You know, I mean, it could be somebody decides to tear down their camp, you know, and, uh, and income, hey, so it, it is, it is variable and, uh, you know, unlike property taxes, you have a grand list, you know what everybody's value is, you set a rate and it generates a certain amount of revenues, not all that different than what it was in a year past. Sewer, fairly stable, little bit of volatility because we have the, we have some people that bill based on flow. Trash is, is volatile. I mean, it really is and the, the numbers that Cheryl talks about, uh, are, are good examples of what happens. I mean, you can lose 25, 30% of your, of your revenue stream and, and you need to respond quickly to, to, uh, because if not, you really go, go in the hole. And, and when Cheryl talks about being in a deficit, it's, it's nearly not like they're in trouble. They're, they're not.
Not, not at all.
Trouble. They try to, they try to hold the line down there and it's.
Financially responsible, I, I think.
So what, um, so what the, uh, there was a lot of discussion about wage increases and all that type of thing and, you know, I, I probably did participate and voted in that. Middlebury had stronger feelings about it than I did. But about the, about the tipping fee, the proposal to increase the tipping fee from 12250 to 125, I voted against that and I voted against it for a couple of reasons. One is, um, is when you raise the tipping fee, uh, it opens the door for commercial haulers to have an excuse to raise their, their monthly charges. Now, obviously, they can raise them anytime they want anyway, but I, I try not to give people excuses to raise their rates. So that was one of the reasons why I voted against it. The other reason I voted against it is I, uh, I, uh, relative to the rate stabilization fund, it had $75,000 in it. I can remember when there was no rate stabilization fund and I believe if they did the research, you'd find that at one point we had a rate stabilization fund of ex, in excess of $200,000 and it was used to keep the rates solid. So we would tap it when we needed it and we would pull from it at year end, kind of like put it into a rainy day fund. That's what we did, we did it for years. I think that folks, you know, you, you know, you gotta fast forward 10 years, different staff, different people sitting on the board, you know, this person told somebody, they told somebody, whatever, and I could very quickly find out that, you know what, this, whoever's been giving the explanation don't know exactly why it was done. They felt that the rate stabilization fund had to be set at $75,000 because that's what it's been set at the last three or four years and that's not what it was for. And so like when, there's people saying, you know, like, "And we've fully funded the rate stabilization fund," and I'm saying, "You did, that isn't how it works, it doesn't work that way." So I voted against the budget, uh, feeling that, that they could hold on to the rate for another year. They probably needed about $40,000 of the $75,000 to hold that rate. That was my vote. There was other members, uh, of the group that really felt that, that allowing that rate stabilization fund to go that low, uh, could be a little dangerous, resulting in the following year, uh, having to raise that 12250 to 13250. All right, so that's kind of the way the discussion is, you know, everybody's got their own crystal ball. Uh, so, you know, I think I went there, I educated some people, you know, we had some close votes, you know, Cheryl and I have had a few, uh, a few emails and I think the last email I said to Cheryl was, "Vote your conscience." You know, I, I'm not, I'm not going to micro manage Cheryl, uh, down there on the board, but, you know, I think she appreciates getting the history and getting some knowledge about how it all works and, uh.
I think last year, when I, when I first started, it was budget time and there was some issues about, uh, there needed to be some money temporarily, um, obtained and there was talk about borrowing money and what the board decided to do was take from the rate stabilization. So when you say that was funded back in, I think it's because it was taken out at the end of last year.
Okay.
Because there needed to be some cash and they didn't want, or actually voted whether or not to go to a bank and take out a loan. And I was actually saying, "No, you have this money, why would you go to a, a bank and pay interest?" So it was put back in this year. But it, it's for that same reason, you know, why go to a level where you're possibly needing to borrow money if you have a, a slight increase that looks like, you know, might hold you throughout the year, you know? If, you know, matching this year's conditions with next year's condition, that, that increase in the tipping fee from 12250 to 125 is the difference between maybe needing to borrow money versus keeping your head above water without needing to go to the emergency rate stabilization fund. So I, I am on the fence on that one, but, uh, I thought I'd get your, your thoughts and feelings.
Andy.
Well, being that I'm a customer of Casella's, they seem to hammer you at every point that they can and I kind of agree with Mel that, you know, if they could keep the rate at 12250, that would be outstanding and use the rate stabilization fund for which it was put there for.
Any other comments? Feelings?
I have to think on that open rate.
You've gotten to Thursday.
Well, you got till Thursday. Just don't put Cheryl on speed dial.
That's right. Well, I think the whole, I think the board is torn and I think the efforts to, you know, charge a little bit here and a little bit there and cut a part-time person here and cut a part-time person there. I think these efforts are, are made because they are used to being, um, successful, not rolling in dough, but not having to borrow money, not having to do, uh, you know, take many of the strategies that other districts have taken. I, I'm under the impression that Rutland perhaps is in a very bad situation and other districts are. And, and this is, uh, the entire state is the same. Chittenden, every chart that I've seen that matches, you know, where we're at versus, um, other years has been exactly the same. It's the same trends everywhere. Chittenden is down, everywhere has the same trend going on. That's why you see a lot of increases. We're still actually one of the lower ones and we've resisted a couple of things. There's, there's been suggestions of, of having stickers, you know, for all of the citizens, uh, all the residents, a, a certain amount, which will raise, you know, a, a certain amount of instant cash, but there's a lot of people on the board that don't want to do that and they don't want to tax people more. And my feeling is that going up on the tipping fee was going to impact individuals the least amount because I, I think she broke it down and I think what Terry said is the, it, it was like a few cents on every large trash bag and I, I don't remember the weight on it, but it was a very small amount. We're talking $2.50 per ton. It's, it, it should not increase anybody's individual burdens. It seemed like that was more targeted toward the big, you know, the big haulers that come in with. And Casella does whatever Casella wants regardless of us. We're all paying Casella, one way or another, so.
I know that they get a lot of materials in there that shouldn't end up in landfill. It'd be nice. No, no, the transfer station. Well, I worked there years ago. There's unbelievable lot of reusable material and I would hope that it would be able to put in a place and get some money out of it and that would also help offset some of the expenses. I know that they, it's hard to do that, staff it and keep the place running. It's a kind of a nightmare, but you gotta do what you gotta do when you gotta do it if you're gonna take and, and be smart business people. So I think there's, there's some other things there that aren't being done that could be done, so.
You'll have to talk to me about that sometime because I'm not familiar with the 10 years ago stuff that was going on. I know the Household Hazardous Waste Program has been a huge success and we just managed to get Clean Harbors to extend their contract for another year without any increase in price and without needing to go out to bid. So that they, they seem to be very conscientious about how we can, um, you know, not increase prices to people. That's my feeling, that they're pretty conscientious about that, but also wanting it to be done the right way. I'm surprised there's stuff going on because my impression is that they try really hard to.
Well, I, I haven't worked at the place in a number of years, but I know that there's a lot of stuff that gets turned in there that could go for reuse versus being destroyed and they're there because they're a process facility and they process it, so.
The latex paint is one of those, they're, they're starting to, they're getting into a program now for latex paint.
Took advantage of it. Very nice.
Yeah.
Excellent.
It's, they seem to make improvements a, all the time. I'm impressed with their energy that they have for the few people they have working there, nicely paid, but few people. They seem to do a lot with what I feel what they, they have to work with, so.
Okay.
I will go and listen on Thursday and just a quick switch of my hat, I, I want to invite you all to, um, from the school board. Invite you to the city forum, the Virgin City Forum that is happening on.
December 2nd.
December 2nd, thank you. On Wednesday, there we go.
I was going to mention that.
It's, uh, it's, it's sponsored by, uh, the Addison Northwest Supervisor Union, but it is, um, conducted by Vermont Rural Council, Vermont Rural Council and Development. It's a nonprofit group that comes in and does mediation and helps get the feelings from the community that is hard to, um, really get when you're trying to figure out how to move forward with, with your prices going up, the budgets going up, enrollment down, all this stuff that you're familiar with, like how do we move forward? How do we keep going and keep our budgets out of the two-vote question? And, uh, one of the, one of the things that the school board feels would, uh, help the situation is, is unification, but, uh, unification didn't happen five years ago when, when it was proposed. So we're, uh, trying to hear from everybody in, in, in other communities as to, you know, how, how could that work? How would it work for you? What would, um, work for our district? And so we're having a community forum and you especially would be really welcome to come to this forum. Um, I know that you came when you, uh, the commissioner of education, Armando Velasquez, came to our last supervisor reunion meeting and, uh, one of the things that he is going to the legislature with is a real push for consolidation, a push for, you know, zero, as close to 0% on our budgets as possible and a lot of things that it would be nice for us to steer that change and be ahead of that wave that could be forced on us anyway. But, uh, hearing your thoughts on it would be very helpful to us who are trying to put that plan together.
And, and, uh, that was part of the conversation at that meeting is, uh, we are really part of the steering group and, and out leading the, the charge. So, um, it is our opportunity to set our destination.
The state is actually watching us right now.
Yeah.
Because we're so close as our five towns are so close together and we've already got contracts that are just, you know, the five-town already supervisory-wide, we're so close to being there that if we can make this happen ourselves, it will actually probably be that, that domino effect for the whole state and they're all hoping that this is successful, you know, the ground roots movement instead of it being forced down our throats.
And actually, they're looking to us as the pilot program and how this runs, so.
So if we can make that work, it'd be awesome.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks for, for, uh, your thoughts and I'll talk to you by Thursday.
Okay, all right.
Excellent. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And if you want to, um, if you guys have questions about the waste stuff, we'll talk trash.
Okay, great. Okay, um, I believe our next item is item C, sewer extension policy. Chris?
What you have in front of you is our final proposal to this board. Um, if you want to go down quickly, I'll tell you what all the parcels are. I have dotted them down. I may have to, need some help here, but. Parcel one being the parcel owned by the FIC LLC and that is the Chittenden Little City Flooring, Abishans, Card Quests, the Chinese Restaurant and the Computer Store. Parcel two being the 6.11 acre parcel owned by the State of Vermont, which is the Park and Ride. Parcel three is the 9.37 acre parcel owned by the Town Affairsburg located easterly of the Park and Ride and that's the last parcel, right, that's out there. Parcel four is the .5 acre owned by Just Do It, which is Gaines. Parcel five is the parcel owned by the FIC LLC again, um, and which, that, that track is the Bedet Barn Track towards the Eagles Club. And I believe we said that was seven acres, right?
Yeah, that sounds about right. I'm not sure, but the, it, it actually, that entire parcel is probably about 17 acres.
Oh, 17.
But the way this is written, uh, it makes reference to the fact that it, uh, no different than what was written in 1994, that it runs from Moncton Road to a point, uh, or a line, I should say, uh, 680 feet from Moncton Road. So it doesn't go all the way or nearly all the way to the Eagles Club. It may go 40% of the way, if you will. So in hopes that, uh, the southern 60% would remain undeveloped, uh, and then the upper portion that, uh, that's described at that 680 feet, uh, might be developed by access of sewer.
Okay, parcel six is the Deniker property. Parcel seven through 11 are the residential properties that are on the town border. And of note of that, um, if you scoot down to number seven, um, a single-family dwelling is the only allowed use to be connected to the sewer system from parcel seven 11. And we did that to keep the boundary residential, to protect our boundary. The other, um, i- item I want to just point out is on, um, number six, it says, "No residential uses, gasoline service stations and convenience stores will be allowed to be connected to the sewer system from parcel one and six through, one, one through six."
Can I ask a question? Just, is there a definition?
Finish out a convenience store. I kind of have an idea what that might be, but could there be any confusion about that?
I believe that's in our zoning, where that definition would be, right, of a convenience store?
Uh, one of the things, Joe, the way this would work, these, uh, this is an article and it makes reference to the elements of an agreement. So the agreement could be 15 pages long with, with clarifications relative to what that would be. So instead of, uh, it maybe it would be good to be here, but we're, we're trying to keep it as concise, but it wouldn't be.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
Yeah, it's good.
And the last item I really want to point out is item 10 with regards to the shared Parcel one has been set in stone already, right? That we get a percentage of that?
Yes, that, we already have what's called an interim sewer extension agreement.
Right.
And that's what, uh, we bill out, uh, on an annual basis, which is, uh, you know, Joan bills it out, right? Joan, it's 50% of the taxes above the 1993 level.
Right. Okay.
Sorry.
And then, um, parcels two through six are from the tax year of 2009 forward. And then, um, we're.
Yeah, seven through 11, if somebody wanted to put an addition on their house or replace their house, the way this is written, there is, there's no, uh, additional surcharge, if you will, of, of property taxes. The other thing I wanted to know under parcel, when you look at parcel two and three, uh, those two parcels are really part of the original 45 acre piece that sat out there, which included, you know, from the railroad, uh, over to where a Stewart's was once proposed. That piece was originally 45 acres. It's been split a little bit, but when you look at, uh, the survey, I think I gave a copy of the survey at one point, uh, there are, there's more land out there, but it's restricted. Uh, some of it is restricted due to Primate set aside, uh, no different, you know, it really is a part of that 9.37. Uh, some of it is restricted due to Primag set aside. Uh, no different, you know, it really is a part of that nine point three seven. When Carl Coe was here speaking about the, the nine point three seven that's owned by the town, there's actually a floating four acres or floating four and a half acres inside of that nine acres that can be developed because the balance is an agricultural set aside. There's other land there that has already been an agricultural set aside. And then there's also some additional land out there whereby the development rights has been transferred. So, the, uh, the six point one one acres, as Christine described, you know, can be and will be developed as the train station and the nine point three seven, really only half of that will, would, will only, will only ever be, become actively developed.
Any questions? Two, two of you are here that are on the committee.
Uh, Ferrisburg, I'm going back to, uh, number ten. Ferrisburg, it was willing to give up fifty percent of the taxes?
They haven't seen this.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm talking about on the very first one, on the parcel one.
Oh, they don't give up anything. It's a surcharge. What happens on parcel one is let's say that they, let's say that their nineteen ninety-three property tax bill was five thousand dollars for the sake of discussion. And let's say that their tax bill for this year, uh, is ten thousand dollars, alright? What happens is, is they, they pay Ferrisburg ten thousand dollars and they pay us fifty percent of the difference between the five and the ten. So, there's actually a surcharge, Randy. There's not, there's not a tax sharing arrangement.
And that's the same type which you're proposing right now?
Under what is being, what is, the way that this is proposed, it would be a tax sharing, not a surcharge. However, uh, you know, we don't know how Ferrisburg will, will respond to this this time, uh, but one of the, one of the options that Ferrisburg might have in this regard would be to create a special assessment district so that those properties that are connected to the sewer would have a surcharge of which that surcharge would go to us, you know, or kept because half of the difference went to us, you know, whether or not, you know, whether or not, uh, because the property taxpayer, unlike, unlike currently, you know, the property, the shopping center, they pay their taxes to Ferrisburg and they also pay that, uh, fifty percent of the difference to Virgin's. Under this type of an agreement with the, with an intermunicipal agreement, the property owners pay Ferrisburg. And so, they would pay them their full tax bill. Conceivably, they might have to also pay a special assessment to Ferrisburg. And then Ferrisburg would in turn pay the City of Virgin's, uh, the equivalent of what the city would receive under, under ten.
Okay, my que, my question is, is why didn't we propose the same as parcel one? I'm just, I'm asking, just.
The reason is, is that under, under, uh, under Act sixty-eight, uh, Ferrisburg actually loses money. And that's why they, they would have to, uh, uh, to make them whole, they would have to create a special assessment district just because of the way educational taxes work on, on property. They would loo, they would lose money without having a special assessment district. In nineteen ninety-four, uh, the law was written, uh, well, I may take that back. Another solution to that, Randy, is a change in the law. Uh, one of the things that, that has been uncovered in all of this is that, is that there's a law that deals with intermunicipal agreements. This Title twenty-four, Section forty-nine fifty-one is a law that's been on the books. It's about property tax sharing, alright? The problem is, is that Act sixty, Act sixty-eight makes this law not work because Act sixty, Act sixty-eight doesn't take into account the possibility of tax sharing. So, one of two things would need to happen in, in Ferrisburg. One would be a special assessment district so that in essence Ferrisburg, uh, is, does not lose any money in this endeavor. Uh, the other option would be to change the law such that, that fifty percent of the growth would actually, from a mathematical stand, mathematics standpoint, would become a part of our grand list and not be a part of their grand list so that you don't have a municipality losing money.
Okay. I'm just asking questions out of ignorance, I mean.
Good question. They're good question.
Yeah, good question.
So. I'm for simplest, I'm always for the simplest solution.
So, is, um, is the members that aren't on that committee, are they comfortable with taking this to the next level? I, I know where, I think I know where they're coming from, okay? Mel kept me apprised of what was going on and, yep, that's, that's, boy, that sounds good, but I, I want to hear from Joe and Randy. I think the next level is to send this off to Ferrisburg.
Send it to Ferrisburg? We, we owe a copy. I have spoke to Tom Dennecker back when I brought this up originally. Um, the board wanted me to keep Tom in the, in the loop. Our planning commission. Uh, the planning commission talked about it again, um, and, um, they didn't take any, any action. Um, uh, they met la, they met last night. So, I, I do think that the planning commission does like to talk about uses, not only uses in Virgin's, but uses in Ferrisburg. Um, uh, if, if you would like, it's totally your call, really. If, if you want this to go to Ferrisburg, go to Tom Dennecker. Or if you'd like to have the, the planning commission, uh, review this, uh, and come back to you, that, that's fine. It's, uh, it's whatever your, whatever your pleasure, really.
My gut feeling is, um, that if it's coming from the council, it's a step above, not, not trying to put them down, but it's a step above them for that decision made. We have already kind of know where we want this to head. It's the only other parties that need to give it a yea or nay is the town fathers from Ferrisburg and the other people that are involved, uh, like Dennecker and stuff. Um, I, I don't know, but I don't want to shut them off because they, they're doing such a fantastic job. Um, if they really had some other concerns, um, I would like to, I guess I'd like to hear them too.
Yeah, the process here, obviously, would, this would go, would be included on our article for Town Meeting Day if Ferrisburg agreed to have that on their ballot as well. So, there is some time involved here. I mean, the, the warning doesn't get approved, Joan, until the end of January sometime. So, you know, the city council will have, you know, two or three meetings, uh, before. So, uh,
Mel, do you know some of their concerns?
Who?
Planning commission. I mean, I just feel that.
I don't, the planning commission, the planning commission as a whole has, has not, um, uh, taken any action in this regard. Uh, I think that they're, um, you know, I, I don't think I'm talking out of church. You know, Mark Hatler has, you know, has serious views about, um, you know, about, I think you've heard him here at the meetings, his concern, not only about, uh, parcels just outside of Virgin's, but even parcels just inside of Virgin's. You know, Mark, Mark has concerns about potential adverse effect of development of the northern gateway and development on the outskirts. So, he has those concerns. Uh, relative to the planning commission as a whole, the planning commission has not talked, talked about it as a whole because they ha, they haven't been requested to do so, uh, you know, as a, as a planning commission. But obviously, you know, you know, the, 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 the planning commission will, will respond to things that you'd like them to respond to and they'll respond to things that you don't want them to respond to, to be honest with you.
Randy?
Go ahead and push it for, push it to Ferrisburg.
I mean, you could, we could stipulate something in there, uh, about, uh, you know, this, this is a draft copy and, uh, it might come for further review before it has to go in front of the voters and it might go to, uh, other, other, another group within our.
We're not gonna give this to Ferrisburg. We ought to do it right the first time, make sure we're, you know, we don't want to come back if.
David's not here, uh, uh, but if he was here, uh, he really feels pretty strongly that, that these are the terms that, that the city, uh, that the, that the city council should, uh, consider to offer sewer and that it's, that it's not really a negotiations. It's, it's something that, uh, that we've prepared. It's our, it's, it's the City of Virgin's resource and these would be the terms. And, and, uh, you know, in nineteen ninety-four, uh, the voters in Virgin's supported it and the voters in Ferrisburg overwhelmingly, uh, passed on this, passed, uh, voted against this, alright? I mean, it's very possible that this would go to Ferrisburg and Ferrisburg would say, we're not interested. And, you know, I, I, I've told Mike about this. I, uh, it's okay with me. Uh, you know, I, I'm not, this, I don't know about other members of the committee, how you feel Christine, but if, but if Ferrisburg, if they're not interested in, in, you know, the extension of sewer under the great agreement like that, that's fine. Uh, you know, it's, it's okay.
We've had, uh, certain people make comments about how we try to put a fence around ourselves. Here, we're trying to, you know, let, let it down a little bit and, and try some opportunities here and, and see how it works. And, uh, if, if they deny it, then I guess then.
That's it?
That's, that's their prerogative and like you say, Mel, no harm, no foul.
Yeah. One of the things that a lot of people mi, miss about, about extending sewer is, is, um, the sewer got extended, the sewer got extended to Waltham for the, what I call the Jeveri Trailer Park. Uh, the sewer got extended to a few residences on Ferrisburg. Sewer got extended to the shopping center. My guess is that those sewer extensions were done without ever getting permission from the, the boards of selectmen of, of Waltham and Ferrisburg. Um, uh, I'm gonna try to choose my words carefully, but, uh.
Yeah, you're on camera.
I, I don't think that that's right. I don't think that the City of Virgin should be extending sewer beyond our borders without the blessing of the select boards of those communities, alright? In all due respect to the property owners that live outside the borders, they, they live in a different town and they answer to a board and therefore, you know, that's one of the reasons why this kind of a document, you know, needs to be approved by the select board. And that, that means that the select board and the voters of Ferrisburg are fine with the extension of sewer under these terms. If the voters of Ferrisburg say, that, that, if they vote against this, to me, that means that they don't want sewer out to their town. And if they don't want sewer into their town, we shouldn't be sending it there.
That'd be it, break that.
Break that. Now, trying not to sound offensive here, is, are they aware of the, some of the objections I heard with the last agreement, why it got turned down, is was the revenue sharing and I don't believe, I was unclear of it until you explained it to me tonight. Does this explanation get accompanied, accompanied with a document or?
Uh, I, I, I'm happy to do that.
That might help ease some of the, the concerns, you know, the residents were concerned that they were losing revenue to their.
Well, I don't think you're gonna be able to get whatever number of thousands of people that there are in Ferrisburg. You, you're gonna have to be able to communicate it to the, the board.
Communicate it to the boards.
The board then can make a recommendation to or not to pass and then what the voters do is yet still, you know, up to them.
Yeah, I, I think what I'd like to do, Randy, I, I'm happy to go to a Ferrisburg Board of Selectmen meeting, you know, uh, you know, maybe Zig, you, it'd be good for you to go to that board and, and Mike to go, uh, and not just, you know, sending the mail, here's this thing, you know, but to go out, you know, get on their agenda, uh, you know, bring this out to them, give them an explanation and, and, and the, and some of the, you know, the, the questions of why is it written this way? Because there's some reasons why it's done this way to, you know, to make sure that we have their permission and make sure that we're guaranteed that we're gonna get paid. Uh, and we, you know, you know, we talked about this in the board, you know, we, we, we think that we have a duty also, you know, that, uh, uh, to let them know that the way Act sixty-eight works, the nineteen ninety-four deal would, really wouldn't have worked and therefore there may have to be some special assessment. We want to make sure that they fully understand that, uh, understand that there's another step that they would have to take that we wouldn't have to take.
Well, it, it, you know, just in, so that they're, make, they get all the information they need. And maybe that's what missed it in the ninety-four, what their voters weren't completely informed.
That's possible. I, that is, that is very possible.
Okay, so, um.
I don't know, I see if he is coming.
We can continue. I mean, we're, we're not, we're not stalling just for David. I mean, we can, we have enough here in a quorum to do what we gotta do and, um, I would have thought he'd be here by now because he said before he, he'd be here forty-five minutes late, but.
At least, is what you said.
At least, so. Um, do we need a motion or anything to, uh, send this forward or what's, uh, what's the proper?
I don't care. Consensus is fine. Consensus, because really, you're not act, you're not acting on this. It's the consensus to go ahead and release this to Ferrisburg and Dennecker and.
Do we have a consensus, to consensus to release this to Ferrisburg and Dennecker? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls? Do you have a consensus? Alright, Lynn, welcome. Would you like to share some comments?
I'm just here.
I have a question. Uh, we, we sent a recycling agreement to Panton and just wondered if everything is okay in that regard.
In a Panton's, like, we're waiting for a while, so.
Alright, um, I guess, uh, we have some vacancies in the planning commission and need some appointments. We'll do some advertisement on, um, the next set of, uh, city paper that goes out. Um, Mel, you wanna go ahead and give us some update here on?
I'm gonna go real quickly here. Uh, the, the infamous train station, a couple of weeks ago, there was a, uh, an open invitation to architects and engineers to come and, and view the site where this thing is gonna land and take a look at the building. So, that was held. Uh, this is a project that gets funneled through city accounts for whatever reason. It's always been a little strange to me. I think it's something that, it's about an eight-year-old project that, you know, Randy Friday was involved with. It was associated with the Park and Ride, so I guess it, uh, I tried to flip, uh, flip a coin with Chet Hawkins to have him inherit the thing and he didn't bite. So, anyway, this is a, this is our project apparently, even though the building's gonna be located in Ferrisburg. Uh, but anyway, the, uh, the responses came in last Friday. I think there was twelve or thirteen architectural firms that put in proposals. Uh, Wayne Davis from V-Trans picked those up and they're being copied. There is a local steering committee. Um, it's myself, Diane Lampfer, uh, Andy, I can't remember Andy from the Addison Independent, not you, Andy. The other, Andy Meyer, uh, who's the, who's the direct, Andy Mayer from the Edison County Chamber of Commerce is on the committee. Chet Hawkins, Bob McNary, and some folks from the state. Wayne Da, Wayne Davis is really the project manager. So, anyway, that project that's been talked about for eight years is, uh, may happen. So, that's that one. Penton Road intersection, I let the board know a while ago that we had put in for some, uh, planning funds through the TAC Group. That's the, that's the Transportation Advisory Committee that Greg Edwards sits on on behalf of the city. Uh, the city did get awarded some funding to do an analysis of that intersection and the firm of, uh, uh, it's either Lamro and Dickinson or Dickinson and Lamro, uh, that will be doing that study. There's no local share. Uh, so they're just gonna be looking at that intersection to see what kind of improvements could be done, uh, to that, to get that floated better, to be better. Uh, the, the result of this may be nothing, you know, the intersection, you know, obviously when B.F. Goodrich gets out of work, uh, it is problematic in that area. Maybe some turning lanes. A turning lane might be helpful. Uh, early in the morning, when school buses are on the road, there's additional stack up, uh, that occurs. Uh, you know, so I just wanted to have, you know, there was an opportunity to get some planning funds out there so, uh, they can take a look at the intersection and maybe give us some alternatives and, uh, we'll, uh, just see how that works.
There is one improvement. That sign, the set of signs, we got run over and they put in a short post or they used the same post again.
Okay.
That sits about, about two feet lower than it did.
Okay.
Is there any way we can put the, the taller post back in?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's our sign or the state's sign, but.
It got smucked by a truck and trailer, I think, and they, and the sign's split right in half. All the signs are split right in half right there.
Okay. Well, I'll take a look at it. I, I, uh, I'll have to look at which sign you're talking about.
It's, uh, if you're sitting at the intersection, turning, wanna turn, uh, southward, it's that group of signs there.
Oh, yeah, that's the state's sign. The one that says Fair Haven forty-two and Basin Harbor six, whatever, yeah, that's a. The one that says Fairhaven 42 and Basin Harbor 6, whatever, yeah, that's a state sign.
Yeah, well, it got smucked.
It's getting shorter.
Yeah, it got shorter by two feet.
Okay. So it's causing obstruction there.
Would they be doing a study?
They're just, this is just a planning study. It's not a, it's not a construction project.
There's no tractor trailer trucks coming through here that much anymore, you know?
Well, you know, I, I mentioned that, Zig, as a matter of fact, that, you know, we applied for this money before the bridge closing. Fortunately, the traffic count study was actually done in 2007 and, and maybe there's some difference in that because, you know, to do, to do the traffic count study today, it's just garbage in, garbage out, basically. So we, they already have the 2007 data and so their analysis will be based on that, that pre-existing data.
Because that's going to change. Eventually that bridge, some sort of bridge is going to be there.
Right.
They're going to rebuild it, they said, but whatever it is. But it seems kind of nice not to hear them.
The next item, real, real quickly, and it's my fault. I did not mean to, to not include the Moonlight Lady on the agenda. However, there was an email that I sent to, to Stan, which I copied to the mayor, which I think the mayor forwarded to you all, of which I do not have an answer yet from. I, I think it was a two, a two-question email back to Stan Walker. One, please explain this calendar, I don't understand it. Christine can understand it. I'm colorblind, I don't understand it. So I want to get a, I want to get an understanding as to what this calendar means, all right? Number two, I specifically wanted to get a reaction to whether or not they would consider using our facility here without offering meals so that folks would indeed get off the cruise boat and come to our restaurants. Or as, as Mike suggested, you know, it's possible that local, our local restaurants might be interested in catering the folks that are, that are on that cruise boat. So I didn't hear back from them. If I'd have put it on the agenda, I would have been saying the same thing. I haven't heard back from them. So I want to get an answer to that question. And I'm assuming you all want to get an answer to that question before, before you, you act on their request for next season.
You're going to tell them about going forward with the docks, too? So they'll.
About additional feet? Yeah, I don't know if I have mentioned that, but we can certainly mention that to them.
No, I mean, these.
What's that?
Council.
Oh, about additional 50 feet of docks?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to, even though we, we didn't get the grant, spoke to Carol, we're going to, we're, we're already in the works for buying the hardware, if you will, to construct additional docks. I haven't got the Tony yet, so don't, don't, don't tell them. I don't know when this thing is filming here, but we want to try to get Job Corps involved with their, you know, their building trades. You know, they actually helped us out a few years ago, as I understand it, to do, to do, to do docks. And so they may, you know, help us out in that as well. Just quickly, I, I was mentioning to Randy that we, we finally got the closeout visit from the state, state, state land and water conservation to come down and finally do a final inspection on our skate park. And the timing really couldn't have been better. You know, David and his crew have been down there working on it. The place was absolutely spotless. The, there was some homemade equipment in there that had been taken out on my, on my direction. They really were very impressed with the facility, to be honest with you. And I think now, you know, Andy did a nice article in the paper. You know, David's not here, but David has done a nice job. I've been really working behind the scenes on this to, to make sure that the rules are set up correctly. He's got supervision. I, you know, we're going to get some time this year before Cold Rather really sits in. So I think it's, I think it's really is back on track and it's set up the way that, that it was intended to be set up. And I think that everybody understands that it really, you know, you know, it has to be run, you know? You can't just open the doors and expect it to, to run itself. And that's really what we, we learned from this, from this process. So the facility looks good, got adult supervision and it's fine. Last night, Planning Commission had a meeting. There was a couple of things on the agenda, but the primary thing was, is they held their public hearing on what's called regional review. One of the things that we, we caused to happen, if you will, is once that plan was adopted by the city council, we formally sent that to Addison County Regional for them to go through their regional review. They'll be, they'll, we're sure that we've passed the local government committee. Formal action will be taken by, by the full board in December. By having regional review, it actually gives a little bit more strength to the plan that it has not only been approved locally, but in, but has been approved by the Regional Planning Commission. It also makes it so that planning funds, if we ever see them again, it makes us eligible for the planning grants that, that we have received in the, in the past. So we, we hope to obtain that final approval in, in December. Lastly, I mentioned at the last meeting that, you know, that Joan and I are up to our necks in audit stuff and basically the end of this week, we need to have a lot of work done in the next couple of days. It's, it's, I think I mentioned before that the list of requirements of stuff that we have to put together is, is way too long, in my opinion, but we'll, we'll do it because we have to. Field work is slated in, in December. I'll get the elected auditors in towards the end of December as well and you'll get that audit report. I'm hoping, I'm hoping by the first of January, but I'm, I'm not going to promise that because we don't really control the auditor's work schedule. So that's all I have, Mike.
Holiday stroll.
Yes or no?
Sure.
Okay.
Holiday stroll is set for, and the tree lighting is set for December 5th, hoping that everybody will come out and give a looksee. It will be advertised in our Next City Voice.
Of which an article is due.
Yeah, I know, Mike, yeah.
Me, too. I'm in the same boat. So, and another thing that Mel and I have talked about is, because it may be hard to get them to come, period, or it may be hard to get them to come after January 1st, is we're going to invite the legislators and representatives to the December meeting, which is going to be held on.
I think it's the 17th. It's one, we only have one meeting in December.
So.
Isn't it earlier in the month?
It's right about in the middle. And maybe it's the 15, ah, 15?
15, December, December 15. Thank you, Joan. So that's our next meeting. Now, for the moment that most people have been waiting for, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss appointment of a police chief and a fire chief.
Make said motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Chris, second? Okay, then we'll now go into executive session downstairs in Mel's office.
Ken?
Go out of executive session.
Make said motion.
Randy and Ziggy second it. You sure it started? Okay. First we'll cover police chief. Mel, your recommendation?
Yeah, Mike, the, the selection committee, interview committee of, of myself, Christine, Colette, Ted Manal, Tom Parent and Kitty, we, we had interviews on November 9 and November 10 and the group met again on Friday. And the group became unanimous in its, in its recommendation that I certainly endorse that the next police chief for Virgens is Mr. George Merkel, if confirmed by the city council.
I'd ask for a motion for confirmation of George Merkel as police chief.
Make said motion.
I'll second it.
Open for discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried? And on to the appointment of fire chief.
Relative to fire chief, you know, I had sent a letter out to all of the members of the fire department relative to the opening of chief, of course, upon the resignation of Ralph Jackman. We did end up with two, two applicants and I, I actually fully intended to have a, an interview committee of Ralph and myself. Ralph is still in the hospital and obviously wasn't able to join me in the interview. I interviewed the two individuals and I made a trip down to the hospital to meet with Ralph briefly to discuss his replacement. And my recommendation is that the current first deputy, Jim Brewer, be appointed to fill, to fill the vacancy and would look for confirmation from the city council for Jim Brewer.
I'd ask for a motion for confirmation.
Second.
You got those two?
I do.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Jim Brewer for being fire chief, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And that way I have to vote? I will vote in favor of Jim Brewer for fire chief. I guess that concludes our business. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Chris makes that.
Second.
Randy, second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?